It says meeting now live.
All right, it's all yours.
Okay, welcome to the Town of Colony Planning Board. We hope everybody is well. We hope everyone is well. We're just working out some technical things with respect to the sound. All the trend lines we hope are in the right direction. We think they are. We are trying to stay prepared to do business when the state is ready. So we are doing this simulcast Planning Board meeting. Sean McGuire, our Director of Planning and Economic Development. Do you have any business matters that you'd like to discuss before we call the agenda?
Yeah, we have one item on the top of the agenda under my report here. The Planning Board, as you know, at times is tasked with reviewing different referrals from the Town Board, for example. So in this case, the Town Board did refer to us a request to rezone 1222 Troy Schenectady Road. Familiar with it? It's the Martin Harding and Mazati property right at the edge of town on Troy Schenectady Road. This property prior to the rezoning in 2007 was Zone Business E. And during the rezoning, that was changed to Single Family Residential. And so they've come to, they go onto the Town Board to request the rezoning change there to bring that more in line with A, the property use, and B, the surrounding zoning in that area. Just so you know, just to the, to the east in town, we do have the Core Zone Commercial Office Residential. And to the west going into Niskiuna, it is a commercial neighborhood and commercial neighborhood zone. The Single Family Residential Zone is located to the rear of the three parcels, and I'm going to pull up an exhibit here.
Sean, I don't think you said for the record that the zone that they're seeking. Can you just say that for the record?
Yeah, they're, they're seeking a change from Single Family Residential to Core Commercial Office Residential.
Okay.
So I'm going to pull up the exhibit here so you're familiar with the area here. So MJ Engineering prepared their site map here. And I'm just going to zoom, zoom in over here on the side to show you the zoning we're talking about. Coming a little tighter. So you can see our location here is the edge of town against Niskiuna. The site here in yellow.
Are they divided between, okay, are they in, divided between us and Niskiuna?
They are. They're, yeah, their site is partly in the town and partly in both towns, mostly in ours, somewhat in Niskiuna.
And the Niskiuna portion is, is commercial, some type of commercial, is that what you're saying?
Their commercial neighborhood, give me a second, I'll pull that up here. It is in there, I'm sorry, it's their CN, which is Neighborhood Commercial in Niskiuna.
Okay, thank you.
A small corner of it falls into the residential professional, but that, that will, that remains untouched on the site. And so you can see here in the red is the Core Zone for the town. The Single Family Residential here does come down off of Ly Road and picks up these two sites, just for your reference as well. I'm going to bring in the zoning map from 2017 that zoomed into that area. Okay, you should see that on your screen now. And you'll see in the pink area here, back prior to the 2007 Land Use Law, that site was Zone Business E. The darker red here is Business E1. So those are the pieces that we have a
And what is your recommendation?
Our recommendation is, is a favorable recommendation to approve the rezoning from Single Family Residential to Core.
Okay, we'll take questions. Paul Rosano, any questions or comments?
People are muted, like, give me a second, I'm just going to make sure everybody's unmuted. The darker red here is Business E1. All right.
Is, is Paul unmuted?
Paul's unmuted.
Paul, do you have any comments or questions?
No questions, Peter, I'm good.
Chip?
Nothing right now.
Lou?
I'm good.
Okay, Susan?
I'm, I'm fine with it.
Craig?
Yeah, it's fine.
Chief?
That's, I'm fine with it, Peter.
Okay. Do we have a motion to recommend to the Town Board to change this parcel from Single Family Residential to Commercial Office Residential?
I make the most.
Okay, Susan made the motion, second?
Second.
Lou, second. Any discussion? Oh, before we go, is there anyone from the neighborhood that, or from the public that wanted to speak on this, Sean?
I don't believe so. Everybody's unmuted, so if somebody did register late, late months to provide comments on it. There, this will be subject to Town Board action, which will require the passage of a local law. As part of that process, there will be a public hearing at the Town Board level.
And since we're only making a recommendation, there's no environmental review that we have to make a decision on, correct?
That's correct. This is just for a technical review and recommendation only.
Okay. So we have that motion before us. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and Sean, we have full membership here, right? All seven members of the board are here, correct?
That's right, everybody's here.
Okay. Okay, we're ready for the next item on the agenda. Let's get this on my cellphone here.
Next item on the agenda is 80 Dunceback Ferry Road. It's a conservation subdivision application here. We have Nick Costa.
Okay, I, I, I usually read the titles, which I'll do, which you just read, it's a, the application is for a 12 lot, Single Family Residential subdivision. And if you're, if you want to have any introductory remarks, that's fine, or you can turn it over to the applicant.
I just turn it right over to Nick to introduce the project, and Nick, I'll bring up the rendering.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Sean. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so this is a parcel that's located at 80 Dunceback Ferry Road. It's a, a narrow, has narrow frontage along Dunceback Ferry Road. And then it opens up as the parcel goes to the west towards the Adirondack Northway 87. It's about 9.65 acres in size. It's Zone Single Family Residential. The applicant owns the parcel. And originally, originally, we had come in with a proposal to do a conventional Single Family Residential development, which is shown on, on one of the exhibits. And it's, it's 12, 12 lots. And it had the minimum 80 feet of frontage, it's, it's shown, as Sean has brought it up to the screen. And a minimum of 18,000 square feet. And it had the, the roadway with two cul-de-sacs. And, and the roadway, the first roadway, roadway A, is about a little more than 1,100 square feet in, in length. When we had the DCC meeting, there was a suggestion made that we look at a conservation subdivision. And the conservation subdivision is what we've shown on, on the second exhibit, which shortens up the road by about 200 feet, roadway A, by about 200 feet. And still keeps the 12 Single Family Residential Lot Development. There are, there is infrastructure on Dunceback Ferry Road composed of sanitary sewer and water that would be able to serve the 12 proposed lots. There's also a pond on the site, an existing pond. The, the parcel was used as a, for agricultural purposes. And there's a, there's a, a pond that's located between the proposed roadway and the lots that are front on, the existing lots are front on Dunceback Road. That existing pond, we're planning on, on making it a stormwater system, management system, that, that is already used for that purpose. It takes all of the runoff from Dunceback Ferry Road. And the town has an easement that brings that water that runs off of Dunceback Ferry Road into that, into that pond, and we're
Sean, can you show us where that is with your cursor?
It's, it's where it's labeled Stormwater Management Area, right there, yeah. So we're, we're proposing to utilize that for the Stormwater Management Area. So the, the lots in the conservation subdivisions are a little bit smaller. Some of them are a little bit smaller than the 18,000 square foot minimum required. There, there's one lot that's about, I believe that it's 12,453. So they range from anywhere from 12,423 to 29,000 square feet. So, and, and they, they have the, most of them have the 80 feet of frontage, with the exception of the, of the three lots that are at the end of the cul-de-sac there, which are, are less frontage. They don't have, they don't meet the, the 80 foot frontage. But in the conservation subdivisions, we all know, that's allowable. And because it preserves a very large portion of the, of the site, which is about 3, 3.87 acres of open space, which includes the pond. And, and this layout takes advantage of the, of the site that has a lot of, that was formerly used for farming. So there isn't a lot of trees within, within this area of development, this proposed area of development. If you were to go to the site, the actual, when you, when you first come in, all you would see is lawn area, at least last year, it was a maintained lawn area. And I think that the applicant will maintain that, that lawn. And, and the only place where there really is tree is along the perimeter that goes along the Adirondack Northway. And, and that's been delineated on the plans. And, but the, the, the majority of the, of the site doesn't have any, any kind of vegetation. It's just a grass, you know, grass area, and then there's the, the pond. So that's pretty much the, the proposed development of the site. And, and like I said, we, we started out with a conventional layout to do 18 lot, or 12 lots on the 9.65 acres. And we're still doing 12 lots on the 9.65 acres with a, with a substantial amount of, of land being proposed to be preserved. And that's that 3.87 acres. The density allowed in a Single Family Residential is two, two units per acre. The 12 acres, or the 12 lots end up computing to 1.24 lots per acre. So if there are any questions, this is a sketch plan presentation. So if there are any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to answer them.
Thank you. This is being reviewed by our town-designated engineer, CHA. Joe Grasso is here representing them. And although he hasn't completed a formal review, we would like to take Joe's comments.
Yeah, Pete, thanks. I'll go through some initial thoughts that we had on, on the project. You know, because we were involved when this went to DCC with the, you know, 12 lot conventional layout, which we, we saw some significant concerns that we thought would be, you know, considered by the Planning Board negatively. And, and we think that the, the conservation design that we're looking at tonight addresses a lot, a lot of those concerns. And one of, one of them primarily was a change in to be able to pull the residential lots away from the neighbors along, you know, those lots that front along Dunceback Ferry Road. And you can see the extensive open space, you know, parcel, I think it's lot number 13, they call out. And the location of the, all the residences are away from, from those lots. So a significant improvement over the road layout and, and the lot arrangement. You know, along the, the south side of the site is where there's obviously a large cluster of the homes. And those would be, you know, closer to the, the cereal property to the south. That's something to be cognizant of. The other thing is, is, you know, it's important for the Planning Board to always consider closely whenever lots that join the northway are being developed. Because we don't want to create, you know, home sites that are going to be negatively impacted from the, you know, the, the sights and sounds along the northway. And vice versa, you know, the northway corridor, you know, establishes a certain, you know, look of, of colony as you drive through it. So, you know, and obviously this site's got a lot of frontage along the, the northway corridor. So it's important for the board to consider that. There is a significant berm, you know, along the, the northway property line. And it's important that we understand if that berm would be impacted in any way. We don't expect that to be the case, but you know, until we get into looking at grading plans, we wouldn't know for sure. The other thing is Nick mentioned that there is, you know, a wooded buffer along the northway. And that buffer extends into the, I'll call it the southwest corner, where that cluster of residential lots off Street B are located. So I think we'd want to know, you know, clearly what, what type of removal of vegetation would take place in that corner to see if there would be, you know, impacts on those home sites. The, I also had a question for Nick regarding the limits of the project site. There's an adjacent property of Hogan that was on the DC Plan, DCC plan. It looked like it was actually part of the project site. But based on looking at this plan, it looks to be under separate ownership. And that parcel that includes the barn up along Dunceback Ferry is not part of the project site. Nick, are you able to confirm that?
Yeah, Joe, that's correct. The, the, the parcel that we're, that we have highlighted in red is what Dunceback Ferry Road LLC purchased from the Hogans in Zibro. So that's a remaining lands of Hogan and Zibro. And, and the barn, and I think there may be like a concrete slab from an old, you know, an old foundation or some type of structure that was there, that's shown to the south. That's, that, that's not under the control of the, of the applicant.
Okay, thanks, Nick. And the only other thing I'll, I'll state to that is, you know, we want to make sure that, you know, when we establish a new town road right of way, that the barn, you know, meets the setbacks and we're not creating a, a substandard lot there of, that the Hogans retain or trigger the need for a variance with that barn without it going through the proper, you know, review process. And then the other thing is there, there is a 50-foot Ingress-Egress easement, you know, to the cereal property from Dunceback Ferry Road. And it, and it's going to basically go, you know, if, if that gets developed, it would basically go right behind, you know, lot one, so that driveway could extend to, to the rear there. Theoretically, if that easement was, was utilized for that purpose. So it's just something I think that the, Nick could speak more about in the, in the future. Or, you know, the Planning Board should consider, you know, when they're reviewing the subdivision. From an access standpoint, we went out there, we looked at it, it's, you know, we don't see any issues with the access point that's, that's located there. It's got great site distance. And obviously, it's a relatively, you know, small scale project. So we don't expect there to be, you know, any negative traffic impacts associated with it. So, you know, the site is also served by all the essential utilities, so we don't see any issue there. And the other thing I just wanted to mention is be, you know, regarding the open space area, you know, they're, they've set it up as one contiguous open space lot, which I think is, you know, desirable from an open space, you know, preservation standpoint. And like Nick said, it includes a, you know, a pond, which could be nicely integrated into a stormwater management area. But it's, you know, it's, we have to understand from the town that the town is interested in taking over this lot, including the, you know, the pond and the remainder of the open space. So that's something I think we'd want to understand as the project goes through concept review. Because if not, then we're probably looking, you know, at, you know, open space that could be just, you know, deed restricted and then tacked on to some of the, the residential lots that we're seeing. So, you know, that's the status of our, you know, review thus far.
Nick, can you address the visual, visual impact from the northway? I see there's a contour line there, it shows a lot of, there's a lot of contour lines. I'm not sure which direction it goes, to be honest with you, I can't.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Yeah, sure. It's a, it's a, it's a berm, so
It goes up then down, okay, yeah.
Yes, exactly. You know, the top of the berm, at lea, at least on the property, varies. But there's a 332 contour and a 334 contour in, in the lower sides. You know, again, it varies, as, as you go north, it increase, you know, that berm, you know, gets to be substantial. There's some, there are some areas that are down to 310 elevation. So, you know, to 332, that's 20 feet of, of elevation difference. And, and, you know, there, there's a 336 elevation and, and a 318. So it, it, it varies. And, and this is along the property line. Obviously, the northway itself, it continues to come down. And it forms a, it forms a swale, and then it comes back to the corridor, the, the roadway corridor. So it's a, that's a substantial berm, as, as Joe mentioned previously. And, and we, we are not planning, and obviously, we have to do some work in, in grading the lots. But our goal and objective is not to disturb that, that berm or disturb any of the vegetation that's there. And there is some very mature vegetation along that.
Can you tell, the, the house that's depicted is closest to the northway, can you tell us how far that is from the, the back of the property?
That's a, that's about 25, 50. I, I, I would guess that's a, you know, 50 to 60 feet from the property line. Not from, you know, not from the edge of the, of the, of the travel lane, but from the property line.
How about from the edge of the travel lane?
I, I, I have to take, take a real guess at it, because it's, it's shown on the aerial. If, Sean, if you could bring up the aerial exhibit, I, I think that'll give a better sense of, of the, of the separation between the lot and the, and the travel lane. Because the travel lane is shown there. I would say that there's probably another 50 feet to the travel lane, at least 50 feet to the travel lane. Yeah, i, i, if you can, if you can look at that, you know, you can see the, the travel lane, and it's substantially, you know, double.
Joe Grasso, Joe, Joe Grasso, what do you think of that separation? 100 feet from the pavement of the northway?
Um, you know, I think it's something that we gotta, we gotta look at maybe some, some sightlines or take some, you know, photos from the, from the travel lanes of the northway. You know, we've got some lots that are relatively close there into the corner. You know, once you extend to the north, you know, and then you're screened by the berm and the, and the trees to remain. But I'm more concerned about those lots that are tucked into the, the southwest corner of the site. They, you know, those, you know, those lots and home sites may be very visible. And, you know, the, the impact goes both ways. The last thing we want is, you know, residential lots that are, you know, concerned about the noise from the northway and, and wanting a, you know, a sound barrier wall, you know, along their, their property line. So, you know, you can, you know, the good thing to also consider is, you know, when you look at additional development along the northway corridor, you can kind of get a sense as to, you know, is this closer than what, what the town is seeing in, in other sections?
Yeah, Sean, can you point to the house that's just further north from this? Yeah. What, that looks further out, further away from the pavement, for sure.
Yep.
Okay, we'll turn it over to the Board Chief. Do you have any comments? Is he unmuted?
I am. A couple, one, I was curious whether or not we're going to have a, any type of HOA, because it's, it's looking like a lot of common area there. And whether or not the, there's going to be any plantings to the, I'm confused about direction here. But I guess along the properties boarding cereal, as well as the properties bordering the backyards of Dunceback Ferry. Whether or not there's going to be any type of separation there. Curious about how the fire department will feel about sprinklers in the houses, considering there's only one entrance in. And very concerned about the, the closest to the northway. For those of you familiar with this, it is on the point of an incline on both sides. It's rather noisy there from the cars and trucks traveling south. It's a pretty steep incline coming from the bridges. So the noise is going to be elevated compared to a normal straightaway of the northway. So to Joe's, 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 Joe's point, Joe's point. Factor here. When, as it proceeds through, I'd be curious to see what the elevation of the roof for the closest houses are to the elevation of that berm along the northway. Other than that, that's about it.
Okay, I don't, does anybody want to, does anybody want to address that, either the applicant or Joe Grasso? Probably more logical for Nick.
With, with regards to the HOA, there, there's, there's not a proposed HOA for this development. It's just the, the, the number of lots is not sufficient to support a, an HOA. There will be plantings that will be done along the rear of the, of these, of, of the homes along Dunceback and also along the, the cereal property to provide some, some more screening, along with trying to save as much vegetation as possible. You know, with, with regards to the review of the, of the proximity of the, of the two lots there to the northway, we'll, we'll just have to take, you know, some additional, as, as Joe suggested, as we go along, we'll have to do some sections and, and, and show some elevations and, and show what the relationship is with the roof lines to the, to the northway and the berm.
I'd be curious to, to have some decibel readings done at about the location of those foundations.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, okay, good points.
Sure, I will try.
Sorry, Chief, are you done?
Yeah, that's it, thanks.
Craig?
I'd certainly agree with, with the comments that have been made about certainly the one lot, for sure. I mean, 100 feet is very close to the northway. The other thing is, and maybe this is premature, but have, have any calculations been done yet on the conservation, the normal calculations that are done for Conservation Overly District?
Yeah, Conservation Subdivision. Or Conservation Subdivision? We, we're, we're, we, Craig, we, we're at 40%. The 3.87 over 9.65, I think is 40%.
Okay, Sean, there, there was a, one of the maps showed, was a, I should have, should have made note of, of what, which one it was. It showed, it was a colored map with, with other, looked like maybe where there might have be some conservation issues.
Let me pull that up. Nick, I think we just have three color maps here, just correct me if I'm
Yeah, that, that's correct. There's, there's three. There's the conventional, the conservation, and then the aerial.
This was the, this was the conventional that we initially received.
That's correct.
Okay. You gonna try pulling up something else, Sean, or not?
Yeah, I'm looking through here, and what we have.
Craig, what did you think it showed?
Well, I thought it showed, especially the lots in the, on the south side. It almost showed as, as though there was some area that was going to need to be conserved. And it looked like the houses were well encroaching into those areas.
Oh.
Are there, other than, are there wetlands on this site, Nick?
No, the, the, these, this whole area is, is maintained. And, and the pond is a stormwater pond that was built by the, the farmer and And, and the pond is a, a stormwater pond that was, uh, uh, built by the, the farmer and, and I, like I said before, the the main feeder to that stormwater, uh, pond is the, the town line that comes down from, uh, Dunceback Ferry.
Okay. All right, I'll have to try to find, you, you, I'm good right now.
Okay, Susan?
I don't have any comments at this point.
Lou, do you have anything?
Uh, my only concern is the, is, and it's already been discussed as the northway. I think I found the map that you're, the overlay you're looking for, Craig, um, in from what I'm looking at, you're correct. It looks like the, um, it does infringe upon that, uh, into that area you're talking about.
Can you turn what, what you're looking at, Lou, around, just so we can get a?
Can you see it?
It's hard to see.
Higher.
Right there, up.
Uh, that's the, yeah, that's the aerial.
Have up, that's the one Sean had up on the screen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It shows, it shows the boundary lines in the back down here, then it extends over into that area you're talking about, I believe.
Yeah, those, that lot, those lines, right?
Yeah.
Oh, that's different than what Sean had?
Maybe the same map, just a different, uh, intensity.
Yeah, okay.
Um, but I, but I guess if there's no, if there are no, there are no land, other than potentially the berm, there are no lands that are constrained other than the berm and the pond. Is that correct or not correct?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, so.
Hey, Craig.
Yeah.
It, it's Joe. So, so two things on that. One, one I would say, and because we, when we reviewed it, we assumed that that was still the case, but, and Nick, you said that the, the pond is a stormwater management area, but, you know, I think it's let's know right up front whether or not the core would take
Yes.
jurisdiction, because
Yeah.
I don't, I wanna, if, let's face the, you know, facts now and
Yeah.
And then, you know, any slopes over twenty-five percent, I assume that those slopes up, up along the berm are not over twenty-five percent, but those, that would be something that would also, you know, be considered constrained. But other than those two things, Craig.
Okay, all right. All set, Craig?
Yes.
Lou, thank you. Lou? Chip?
Uh, nothing right now. Oh, yeah, where is that, uh, line coming from, uh, the road? It drains into the pond.
Yeah, that, that's on the, on the north side of the proposed road. Uh, Chip, i- if, if you look at the uh, at the road, the proposed access road, the proposed roadway A, on the north side of it, uh, between uh, the road and the, and the neighboring lot, there's a
And you put it, put the, uh, put the map up on the screen.
Yeah, there, there, there's a large culvert that comes in that the town owns, and there's an easement there, uh, Chip, that, that is labeled.
Is it right along where, where the road comes in from Dunceback?
Yes, correct.
I, can you show it to me now?
Yeah, Sean, yeah, go up a little bit, Sean, with your pointer, uh, right there, you know, right, right between that uh, neighbor, ne- neighboring lot and the edge of the road that's labeled Street A. Uh, that green space right there is an easement from the town of, to the town.
All right.
That it, Chip?
Yeah, that's it.
Paul?
Okay, I got a couple, uh, Nick, uh,
Yeah.
Since we're talking about the stormwater pond, as, as we say, if the town has an easement into it.
Yes.
Ready? Who's responsible for maintaining that pond once this project is completed?
Well, the, the, the idea is to turn that over to the town, uh, you know, that, that, uh, entire open space and the pond itself, uh, you know, to turn it, you know, over to the town. Uh, that, there is no HOA that, that is being proposed to, um, maintain and, and take care of that stormwater pond.
Okay, um, I'm not, I'm not too I'm not with that at this point in time, but we, we can do this at concept. Uh, would you go to the access points from the cul-de-sac to, to lots ten and eleven for me? Okay, now I see, are they having two shared, two common driveways, one driveway? It looks like you've got two, two driveways and each one is fifteen feet, two inches?
Uh, fifteen, uh, feet, two, fifteen-point-two feet. Uh, yes, it would be two separate, uh, 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 accessway. Uh, they, it's, they can build a shared driveway. Uh, you know, we, we, we can, we can certainly propose that if that's what the board prefers.
Well, I'm, I'm questioning it because if it's two different driveways, um, we gotta get a fire truck in there. We need at least twenty feet. I didn't know whether you were gonna propose putting some kind of separation between those driveways, uh, or not, or is it, is it just gonna be thirty, thirty-point-four inches of, you know, blacktop?
Yeah, i- if, if, uh, if, if we, if we have to get the, the fire truck in there, uh, we would need a twenty-foot. You're absolutely correct. We would need a twenty, uh, twenty-foot, uh, uh, asphalt, uh, pave, pave the uh, access and, uh, it would have to be a shared, uh, drive at that, at that juncture. But we can, we can further look at that as we develop the concept, uh, uh, and do the, 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 the design of, of those lots and those driveways.
Okay, the last piece, uh, not to delay this anymore, but where, where would you say the nearest fire hydrant's gonna be? Because you got driveways that are hun- almost a hundred and fifty feet plus to a house.
Yeah, the, the, there's one right at the end of the cul-de-sac, right near where those two, where you were pointing out, those two driveways, the, those, uh, that go to
Okay, I see now. Okay, all right, I'm good. That's good, Nick. Thank you.
You're welcome. I just have a couple of quick questions. Um,
Sure.
Does that raise open development area issues because they have inadequate frontage and?
No, no, I, 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 I think that because we're in a conservation subdivision, uh, w- we, we, we've done this before where we, we have reduced frontage. Now, fifteen feet, uh, we may have to increase that a little bit.
Okay, so let's, let's take a close look at that. I also wanna get back, make sure I understand the impact on the cereal property. Uh, if you, Sean, if you could show us as much of that edge of the, of this.
The southerly side, the southerly side, yeah.
Correct. Now, w- we're in the process of doing a subdivision for the cereal property. And I'm not sure if we're talking about the, the house that's re- the, the house that's already existing, or, uh, or we're talking about the new subdivision that we're doing.
No, I, I think, I think it's the, the existing home that, uh, that is the residence of, of Mr. and Mrs. Cereal.
Okay, Sean, can you show, I, I think I understand where it is, but is it, is it the, can you? Yeah.
Yeah, so, so where the, where the white, where, where the structure, the White House?
Okay.
And, and that's where it is.
How does he get into his home now?
He has a driveway, uh, just, uh, just, uh, east of the, of the, um, uh, northway. Uh, Sean, if, if you can go down to the southwest, uh, where the, where the, um, uh, the northway goes over Pollock Road, he has a driveway that, that starts there and comes, and comes up, uh, to his home. Uh, it, it, go a little bit lower, uh, yeah, a little bit more. Right there.
Okay. Is that gonna be incorporated into the new subdivision?
No, that, that, well, you know, uh, he, he's still gonna be using that existing drive. We, we've
Okay, so what's the right of way that we're worried about? Somebody had mentioned earlier in the presentation.
Yeah, Pete, I had mentioned it. It's Joe. I, I believe that there's a fifty-foot ingress egress right of way off of Dunceback Ferry Road. Um, that he, that that lot has the rights to.
I mean, I, I see two parallel lines and I'm, if Sean could, okay, the house that sold this, I forgot the, the folks' names there.
Ho- uh, Hogan and Zibrow, yeah.
Okay, so is it south of there, is it south of their property?
Yes.
Okay, Sean, can you trace that?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, so he's got two, he's got two, he has a deeded right, I, I should say. He's got two ways to get to his property, right? Is that, is that what we're saying?
Uh, the, the way I understand it, and, and we'll, we'll have to get some clarification on this. Originally, that, that was his right of way, uh, and, 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 uh, that's been abandoned, uh, i- i- because he built the, the other driveway. Uh,
Okay.
That, that driveway is no longer in service.
Okay, well, I'm not as worried about impacting that if, if he's, if he's got another way in. That's, I guess that's the only point I'm making. Okay, and, and let's make clarification on that.
Yes.
Because other members did have concern. I don't have anything else. Joe, anybody wanna wrap up? Or would you just say?
My, my concern is that, I don't, what's the history in the town with, uh, with shared driveways like this? In terms of maintenance and et cetera.
I, I think from a legal, I'm a lawyer, and every lawyer I know that does real estate says shared driveways are a disaster. They lead to conflict.
And, and we can, we can, we can show it as a, as individual driveways. Uh, you know, we, we just have to widen that fifteen foot.
Okay.
Okay.
So Nick, would that be a, like, two twenty-foot driveways with some sort of a, uh, grassy knoll between them or something to separate?
That's correct. That, that's, that's what you would end up with. That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, hey, Paul, this is Joe. I, you know, I'm, I'm not sure if it would be a requirement uh, of fire services to require, uh, you know, twenty-foot wide width. I, I think that that requirement comes in if it's over five hundred feet long. We'll have to check that.
Yeah, we'll check that.
You know, I mean, I, I, when you look at the layout, it looks like they're long skinny driveways, but in, you know, they're, I think they're on less than two hundred feet apiece.
Yeah, I, I see a lot of times with the fire trucks, when they, when they come in, especially at this far away, um, and they have to put their outriggers out.
Yeah.
We're in a whole ball of wax then, because now they're trying to put their outriggers into a grassy area. They'd rather be on a blacktop area.
Yep.
That's just my opinion. The fire services is fine. I'm good to go, but, uh,
Yeah.
With other, other projects.
Yeah.
We did have comments.
Yeah, concept, we'll speak to that. We'll tell you what their recommendation is, but then obviously if the planning board wants to make, you know, other recommendations, that would be, it would be good to hear them at that time.
Thank you.
Yeah, the fire services, just so you're aware, and there, when they reviewed this at DCC, they were looking for a hydrant on the street. Um, between Dunceback Ferry and Lot One, so that's on the original one, but they also recognized there was a shared driveway initially, um, on another, uh, uh, again, lots ten and eleven, and did note that it does need to meet section five oh-three-point-one and D one oh-three-point-four of the inter- international fire code, so uh, I believe that's already been raised. Um, but just with the change of the conservation subdivision, I just think we just have to, uh, readdress that.
Yeah. Thanks, Sean.
Okay, anything else? Okay, I, I hope the applicant's taken away some of our comments and can incorporate, uh, them till the next, or address them the next time he comes back.
Yes, thank you, a- and we will.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda, six thirty-five Columbia Street Extension Starlight Retail. Um, the proposals for, it, this says two-story, uh, but I thought it was three-story. I don't know if that's a typo. Uh, thirty-nine thousand square foot office retail, and I think this is the wrong description. Am I right about that?
There was a minute description, right? It was the, uh, initially proposed as three buildings, coming back to a concept for one building, three-story, sixty thousand square feet.
Okay. Uh, do you have anything to say, Sean, before we turn it over to the applicant? We'll get the, the site.
I know Dan's provided as of the presentation, so I'll turn it over to him. I'll just, uh, take a second to pull that up for him. Uh, I think Dan had to step away, so I don't know if somebody else is here for the applicant.
I saw Paul Falati. Paul, do you wanna talk about it? We gotta get the right picture up. Oh, is that their presentation?
That's their presentation, yeah.
Okay.
Dan's checked into the meeting.
Am I unmuted?
Yeah.
Yes, we can hear you, Paul.
I'm not sure where Dan is. Maybe he's at another meeting. He says he does multiple meetings and
I saw him. I did see him on, on the screen.
But our previous application
Maybe he's muted. Well, well, Paul, excuse me, is he muted?
No, because I can see his chair and he stepped away.
No, Dan has himself muted.
But he's there, but he stepped away.
On his cellphone, Paul?
I will. We lost Dan. It was only a matter of time. We were gonna lose him.
Dan's on his way back. I see him.
We got him. We have to adapt to these new systems, so we're tr- we're trying to be patient until we get, till we all get used to it.
Okay, I'm here.
Hi, Dan.
How you doing? Dan Hersberg, Hersberg and Hersberg for, um, Starlight Associates LLC. Um, we went through sketch plan. We've had some comments since then. And we tried to address some of those in, in the plan as it exists now. Um, Sean, this, this is the site plan. Um, uh, one comment was made previously from, uh, Joe Grasso, why do we need four drive-throughs? And we had four drive-throughs because we thought a bank might want them, but we cut it down to three, which is a much more normal um, number of drive-throughs. There's a comment about a number of the um, parking spaces being on dead-end, uh, aisles. We have since eliminated all of those dead-end aisles. We now have a circulation pattern that runs pretty well around the site. Um, the, uh, the parking is, uh, slightly less than required parking. It's, uh, nine-point-one percent less. And we believe this should be, should be considered shared parking, because we have both a retail use and commercial use. Um, and there is no, although shared parking is mentioned in the, in the, in the town code, it doesn't really give you a percentage to deduct. Most municipalities allow something between ten and twenty-five percent based upon the shared use. Normally, if it's residential shared with, uh, commercial, they will allow twenty, twenty-five percent, but ten percent for shared retail and commercial. So we think that is, um, a waiver we would request you grant, uh, the planning board is allowed to grant a waiver up to fifty percent, and we're asking for a waiver of nine-point-one percent. Um, the green area actually increases. This area was almost entirely paved. It had been a parking lot for the, um, the Starlight, uh, when it was there, and, uh, we're actually reducing the amount of, uh, asphalt and paving slightly. Uh, it's currently, uh, uh, well, it's, it's, uh, very close. Next, uh, slide, if you can, Sean, we'll come back and talk about it. But there was some confusion regarding what we had showed before. We had all the different layers on the same plan. So, this is at the back of our property, back where Coliseum Drive makes the bend. This is the limited conservation overlay district. It only includes a small portion of our site. And the green shaded area is already a portion, a portion of the conster- conservation overlay district, deed-restricted area, so we think that we are okay with the relationship with the conservation overlay district. Next, Sean. The, the wetland issue. The green areas are wetlands that were permitted to fill under our permit. So, and that's the portion we're using of our site. The hatched areas are a wetland buffer from this wetland in the middle. Uh, and those, that area we're staying out of. Uh, the black area is an area where a wetland was actually disturbed to get the roadway across, Coliseum Drive across. I think this makes it a little clearer what our intentions are, but we don't thi- we don't need any changes with DEC. We don't need any changes in our mind to the conservation overlay district area. Next. Uh, we, so we, we think we need two waivers and We, so we, we think we need two waivers and one might be a double waiver. The first waiver is a placement of parking. We have actually two front yards, one on Columbia Street, one on Coliseum Drive. We don't put any parking on a Columbia Street side of it. But on a, on a Coliseum Drive, we do have frontage on it. We intend to separate that with a four-foot decorative fence with landscaping and we think that should be permitted. The other, the other thing is that we have that 10 feet off the property line, even though it's 15 feet off the sidewalk. Putting a new sidewalk in there is 15 feet off the sidewalk. And the, we think that that should be permitted. Uh, the second waiver has to do with the number of required parking spaces and I explained that before. Next, Sean. Traffic considerations and Mark Nidoli's in the audience and he can speak to this issue right now.
Uh, yeah, sure. I can go ahead and do that, Dan. Um, I'm not, I'm not gonna read all these bullets. I guess I'll just give you a brief summary of kind of where we're at with the project. Um, as most of you know, uh, Creighton Manning had done the Bout Road GEIS back in 2009 and had identified the mitigation improvements necessary for the development of the bout area. Now, within that bout area was the Starlight parcel. It was called parcel 28 at that time because there was no, uh, known development. And we had done an estimate of trips for that parcel in order to determine, you know, how that would, um, add to the, the, the traffic in the area for the, the Bout Road GEIS. That was back in 2009, which was approved by the, by the town. And then in 2018, uh, Starlight came forward with a phased development plan. The first two phases included the ACO site. And then they had a sort of a generic development plan for phase three, which is what we're talking about. So back in 2018, we did a trip generation estimate to determine whether or not we were below the thresholds that were identified in the Bout Road GEIS. And we did determine that we were below the GEIS back in 2018 for phase one, two, and three, even though three was a little speculative. And we moved forward with those first two phases. Starlight has now come back with a little bit more of a substantial plan of what they, what they know they want to do. And so therefore we went back to make sure that, again, we were below what was identified in the GEIS to make sure there aren't any new improvements in terms of traffic that are required for the site. The phase three, a couple of years ago, was a little bit more geared towards retail. This new phase three has a little bit more office in it. And when we redid the trip generation assessment, we actually determined that the site will generate actually less trips than what was approved back in 2018. Uh, as part of the original Starlight plan, which then indicates that we're below the, the Bout Road GEIS trips. That validates the traffic study that was done for the GEIS and the improvements and mitigation that were identified for that. So we don't think there's any new traffic improvements that would need, that would be required for phase three. The Starlight would just be responsible for, I guess contributing to the GEIS fees based on the CDT C formulas. Uh, we also took a look at the access into the phase three site. And the right in, right out on Columbia Street Extension would have adequate site distance, so that we didn't feel there's any issues with that access point on Columbia Street. The access on, uh, the new connector road is, is adequate. It was designed, um, you know, when the connector road went in, so that, you know, it was, it was determined to have good site distance at that time as well. So there's really no other traffic mitigation improvements that we had identified for, for this phase three site.
Okay.
I don't know. Do you, do you want to stop and, and have Mark comment any further on any traffic questions the board may have?
Does the board have any traffic questions? We'll hear from our town designated engineer and see if he has any.
Okay, Sean, can you put the next one up, which is, uh, should be the last slide that I have there? This is a rendered elevation view of the site. And, uh, the building and the landscaping is rendered pretty much as we proposed the landscaping on the site. And, uh, if you have any questions, uh, Ben is a good source on a, on a call too, but again, that's the end of my presentation.
Okay, thank you. Uh, this project is, uh, similar to the last one being reviewed by our town designated engineer, CHA, Joe Grasso's here. Joe, can you give us your comments?
Uh, sure, Pete. Yeah, we, because this is a formal concept review, we did issue a letter back in uh, February on, on the revised plan and it, it does, you know, address a lot of the concerns that were raised initially regarding, you know, the various buildings and, and how, how much the site plan was broken up into, uh, different portions of the site and around the buildings and you know, some struggles with circulation patterns. So it definitely cleans it up and that's primarily because they've consolidated the, the uses into one building, which we think is a, is a, a big improvement of the site. Even though the total square footage is a little bit larger and with a larger building comes, you know, some, some more parking demands. We've always thought that the mixture of uses on the site would allow, uh, shared parking to occur and that's something that we can, you know, get into more details as, as the plan advances. You know, and we also like the building location, you know, where, you know, although it's a three-story building, so being close to the corner of Coliseum Drive and Columbia Street is something that the planning board, you know, should consider. You know, but in terms of the building location being to the corner so that there's no parking up in that corner. And the building location can, can, you know, help screen views of the parking lot, you know, to the rear. I think that's a, that's a great feature of the project site. In our letter, which, you know, isn't based on the plan exactly that we, oh, it is, um, it actually is the plan that we actually have on the screen now. You know, we had, we had some concerns about the dead end parking rows and some circulation issues and the, and the plan that Dan had pointed to in his, um, you know, presentation, started to address some of those issues, uh, which is good. I think that there's still areas that, you know, little tweaks could be made that would, you know, make the, the lot flow better. And, you know, provide a, a stronger pedestrian connection towards the building. You know, and just to overall help the flow. As we continue to look at the shared parking, you know, it's important for us to understand, is all the parking that's proposed still required, um, you know, or could we land bank additional spaces? You know, and, and take advantage of greater, uh, shared parking ratio. Um, that's something that we'll have to look at because, because definitely having to provide less parking on the site could definitely, you know, result in additional improvements to the layout of, of the, the parking lot. You know, the stronger pedestrian connection, that's something that we talked about before. I still think that there's, you know, a, a need to address that so that we don't have so many pedestrian and vehicle conflicts. If the parking areas to the north, you know, are, are used, um, you know, on a regular basis. You know, we had previously commented about the need for a sidewalk along Columbia Street, because I think that is the long-term plan would, would be to provide continuous sidewalks along Columbia Street. And I'm not sure, Dan, if tho, those have made it into the plan.
Yeah, we do show a sidewalk along Columbia Street from Coliseum Drive to the Latham Ford project.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you for accommodating that. You know, and then Dan already mentioned that they cut the size of the drive-through down from four lanes down to three. Uh, so that's a significant improvement. DOT has reviewed the access location on Columbia Street. It's proposed as a right in, right out. And they didn't have any concerns. We don't either. You know, its location could make it possible, shared driveway with the property to the, to the west um, at some point in the future. Obviously, we would lose some parking if that, you know, a, a cross connection to the adjacent property was ever, was ever put in place. You know, but that's something that we could look at, you know, whether or not those parking spaces are, are needing to be constructed at this time. Um, you know, one thing that we may want to consider would be an ingress, egress easement over that. You know, rights and rights out on Columbia Street, just in case that, that lot to the west ever came in for redevelopment, we could, you know, possibly look at it.
What's, what's on that lot now?
Dan, do you know?
Latham Ford.
Okay, thank you.
Let's see. In, in terms of the traffic, you know, we looked at the traffic. Mark did a great job, uh, you know, just, you know, giving us a high level view of it. We're comfortable with the traffic generation. Um, we, we, even with the previous, uh, application, we knew it was coming, coming in less than the previous projections. So we agree that the, that the appropriate mitigation for this site is, is payment of the mitigation fees, which I know CDT C had done an estimate and, um, you know, the total mitigation fees for the development as proposed is about $300,000 and 250,000 hours of which would, would go towards transportation improvement. So it's helping to pay for Coliseum, Coliseum Drive, which was the, you know, that's obviously the ultimate goal of mitigation fees is so that they can fund improvements that, you know, address, you know, cumulative impacts of development. So that's a great thing. And in terms of their access location on Coliseum, Coliseum Drive, that was something that we had, you know, when, when the ACO site was planned, we had always thought that this would be the logical access point to, to this phase three parcel. So, um, you know, we appreciate their uh, work on holding to that location and sticking with only one curb cut, you know, on that one location, which takes advantage of the two-way left turn lane. You know, in terms of the building, they've, they've done a great job, you know, advancing the design of the building and the rendering, um, you know, proves that it's a, it's a very attractive building. You know, we like the design of it. You know, one thing for the board just to consider is, is the scale as it relates to the, the corner of Coliseum and, and Columbia Street. You know, Dan, you know, you mentioned, you know, during your PowerPoint, you know, some, some conserved lands and it looked like the crosshatching actually extended up into, through this site, but I don't think that was the intent and those, there was never, ever intent to, um, conserve any of that drainage quarter that came up into the site. I don't know whether or not that, uh, drainage corridor is regulated by CMAB and whether or not you would need a CMAB approval for the construction of that, um, you know, parking area there. That's something that we would need to, you know, take a closer look at. Um, and then from a seeker standpoint, you know, the town attorney's office has classified this as an unlisted action. But when we, uh, conducted, you know, the planning board conducted seeker for the, for the ACO project, seeker was actually done for this uh, project site as well at, you know, a consistent level of development. Anything on this plan that would trigger the need for additional, you know, seeker review? So I think we've got the existing seeker in place to rely on. If for some reason the planning board felt more comfortable doing it, you know, its own seeker review, you know, we could, you know, um, you know, work with the applicant on, uh, you know, a, a short and normal assessment form and prepare the negative, the, um, you know, appropriate seeker documents as the, as the site plan review takes place. Dan touched on the, the waivers that are required. You know, the, the waiver from the maximum front yard building setback, which is a common waiver that the, that the building or that the planning board grants, you know, that basically allows the buildings to be shifted away from the, the right of ways. You know, based on, uh, you know, the scale of the project as it relates to the roadways. So that's a common one and, and, you know, I would think that the planning board would support that. Uh, the other one is the parking in the front yard, which only really occurs along Coliseum Drive. Um, I think it's a, a 15-foot typical setback and I think they're proposing 10, which is consistent with what was done on the ACO site plan. Uh, and then the last is the number of parking spaces and, and Dan, you know, talked about that already, that we're looking at a shared parking arrangement and not having to, to, to build all the parking that would otherwise be required if you added up the, the various land uses within the, the 60,000 square foot building. Uh, Pete, that's all we've got. You know, the other items that we identified in the letter are, you know, pretty technical and things just for the consultant team to address as the plans advance.
I just pointed out, Joe, that I didn't list the front waiver from Columbia Street. That's my mistake. But there's a 30-foot sewer easement out there and we have the building right up to that 30-foot sewer easement. So we're as close as we can be to Columbia Street.
Great, thanks, Dan.
Okay, we'll take, uh, comments from the board members. Paul?
Yeah, um, Joe and, and Dan, where would the bank parking be if we were going to do bank parking on this?
I would consider. I think we would take the area, uh, all the way down closest to the uh, wetland on the left-hand side of that picture. We would probably take a portion of the, uh, the last portion of the parking out by, uh, Coliseum Drive and maybe a line of parking, uh, next to Latham Ford.
Okay, um, as far as the, a short form EAF, um, we're looking basically at a, a parking lot. Uh, I don't see it being necessary. We've already done the complete review of this property years ago. Uh, why would we be doing an EAF on a, on a, an area that there's no green space on now? It's basically a parking lot. I saw, I, I, you know, I probably would not be in favor of going further with that.
We'll, we'll check with the town attorney. I tend to agree with you. We'll make sure they're okay with it.
What was the question?
Is, is seeker complete? Paul feels seeker's complete. We'll, we'll check with the town attorney to see if we can.
We made a statement in my narrative report that we thought the seeker was complete because, uh, phase three is included with, with actually, uh, 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 design that actually generated more traffic than our final one generates.
Okay, Paul?
Thank you, Pete.
Chip?
Yeah, um, in CHA's, uh, previous reports, I then mentioned, uh, crosswalks in the parking lot. I see none right there. For, because of pedestrians. I mean, there's a lot of, can be a lot of congestion in, in there if, if, when the start, when that building reaches full of occupancy.
Yeah, I think Joe mentioned that. There's one i- issue we wanted to address this pedestrian access and we're certainly willing to address that in the next submission.
Okay.
That it?
It's fine.
Lou?
No, Paul asked the questions I wanted to, so I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Susan? Is Susan muted?
No, I think the beautiful building. My only concern is really the size, but, oh.
Do you mind repeating?
Can you hear me?
It was a.
Can you hear me?
Yes, but can you repeat it though?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes. I mean, I love the building. It's beautiful. I, the size of it is, is concerns me, especially that close to the road. But I think it's a beautiful building. I don't, I'm not sure where I stand with that, but.
Okay.
It's just a.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Okay, Craig?
Uh, well, I agree with, with, uh, Susan. The, the building is very attractive. I was pretty adamant at sketch plan that in my view, the building should not be up against, against the road. And so I'm going to continue along those, that theme. In general, I think that trying to do too much on this parcel of land. And I, and I understand it's, it's a relatively large piece of land, but a lot of it is not really developable. And every part that is developable, they're trying to do something on. This building is too close to the road. It's massive in size. That will tower over that intersection. And be totally inconsistent with everything else that is around that. And I understand, you know, the ACO building is a big building, but that is way off, way off in the distance from this intersection. An attractive building. I just don't think it belongs dead smack at the, at the intersection, especially with three stories. That, that is a very large building. And it's very close to the road. We, when, just to kind of put it in perspective, we pushed the Audi building, I think back further than this building is back off the road. When, when that project was before us. And this, this building is bigger than that and closer to the road.
Thank you. I think we get your point on that. Um, anything else?
No, that's it. No, that's it.
Chief Hider?
Yeah, no, I agree with Craig. And if you look at our, at least the past of the board since I've been on it, we've sort of been asking these people to push these buildings back to the road. And then it's been our history, the board's history of wanting them a little further back. So there's a little more landscaping out front. The building's a beautiful building. Could I, do I think it could be pushed back a little bit? Yes. I think it's going to act possibly as a way to encourage the neighbors to the opposite side to possibly think of redoing some of their buildings. You know, when you, you make, this, this corner is going to be a very pretty corner if it's done right. The only thing traffic-wise, you know, I think everybody knows on the board that my right in, right out theory is that it only works until somebody turns a left. You know, I think when people are going to want to access this building, that right in, right out is so far to the west that they're going to say, you know what? Do I go all the way to the intersection, wait for the light, take a left, and I go to a parking lot? Or do I just zig in this quick left-hand turn? And we've seen it all across the town. And I think the same thing will be seen here. So I just always voice my concern. I think it's a dangerous piece to have a right in, right out. I realize I need that second exit. But I think it's a recipe for disaster for people wanting to make the left-hand turn. That's it.
Okay, I'm going to say we had a lot of good comments tonight. I agree with Craig, Chief, and Susan that we should at least see some alternatives of this building, maybe downsize a little bit. Three stories to that corner is, is, I think, out of proportion to everything else. So I'm not going to belabor it, but maybe we can look at, maybe there's other alternatives. And we'll let the applicant address that now if they want, but maybe, maybe we, we should be able to see some alternatives. So I'll let either the applicant or our T D E address, address what's been said by the board members.
I'd like to jump in. Paul Floty with the Glassy Group is, we're a little bit confused here because in one breath, you guys are telling us, push the building to the front of the property. We want it pushed up. We want it nicely landscaped, and we want the parking in the back. So I'm a little confused on what the town is asking. We're spending money doing these drawings and we're getting, it waffles back and forth. So I, I guess it's from the developers in the town. I think we need to know what is the consistency that the town is looking for. Do you want them up at the front of the building, up at the front of the road or not? And then you can address the size of the building. But it came out as two different tones. We don't like it in the front, push it back. What are you asking from a developer?
Are you saying tonight, you got two different messages tonight?
I got, well, between this and other meetings, so.
I, I don't recall that in other meetings. The, the, the other plan was three different built, three buildings.
Well, there were.
It's apples and oranges, in my, my opinion. Well, I don't remember precisely what was said, but.
And some of them.
I will say. Buildings, excuse me. We looked at three different buildings and the total square footage was smaller. And there, I remember comments that it looks like a nineteen seventies era development. And I think you brought on, on a different team to bring this forward. So I don't necessarily agree with what you're saying with all due respect.
Mr. Chairman, I think one issue here is that the code talks about putting the building closer to the roadway, and we always ask for a waiver. This number, we're three times, we're not ten feet back, we're thirty feet back. The question is, how much further back?
Well, well, you also have two road. I don't, I don't know what the right answer is, but you, you also have two road frontages, like you, as you said, so I'm not sure what the alternatives are.
Okay. Any balance between the code and asking for a waiver and the practicality of putting it, you know, much further back. We can, we can take a look at it.
I mean, I, I can get argumentative about the, about the, you know, the, how far the building gets pushed back in terms of how many waivers we granted in order to make sure, because we, we disagree with the town code. We think it's an error in the town code, to be honest with you. But you also have two frontages here to work with. So, you know, I don't know if Joe Grasso can help or any of the other board members. I'm not sure what the right answer is, but I think it's going to be, it's going to loom over that corner. That, that's, or, or maybe, you know, what I asked for was, is, are there any alternatives? I, I'm not saying I have the solution. So I don't know if anybody else wants to speak on it.
We think, we can take another shot at it.
Joe Grasso, do you have any?
No, I mean, obviously, to, to, to maintain the density that's proposed, you know, with a sixty thousand square foot building, obviously, it's going to require a fair amount of parking. You know, if we push that building back to maintain the density, we're, you know, you would basically take a, a parking aisle and put it between the building and, you know, Coliseum Drive and, and Columbia Street. And, and it would be good to know if, if the, if the planning board is not supportive of that, well, then it, then you're looking at a plan with a, a decreased density, taking that, taking a floor off, going to two-story. Instead of sixty thousand, you're probably going to be down at the, you know, the, the fifty or, you know, forty-five thousand square feet. But would the plan or would the planning board feel comfortable with, you know, one sixty-foot bay of parking that wrapped around the building that would allow that building to slide away from Columbia Street? You know, by, by about sixty feet.
Well, some of the board members that thought, thought they were doing too, too much on this lot. I'm not sure. The other alter, I mean, they do have another road to have frontage on. So, and I know it's an odd-shaped lot, but it, can, can the building be, if we're on the, what's the name of the, the new road? Yeah. Is there any way to build it alongside a Coliseum Drive? Because I think it may be more appropriate there. I, I don't know. I just, I don't know what the solution is, but I know what the objection is. And, and just, just putting a row of parking may not be the solution in between the building and, and the Columbia Street extension. Craig or Chief, do you have any ideas? I know, I.
I don't have any ideas. I, I mean, again, I, I think that they're trying to do too much on the, the billable portion of this property. There's a lot of, there's a lot of this property that they can't do anything with. They can't build on.
Right, which is pushing the building, which is pushing the building away from the back, the back part.
Right.
Yeah.
And they're, they're, they're trying to take advantage of the entire acreage, but on a very, a very small portion of the land.
Right.
I, I, I don't think it's, I think it's too much.
Yeah.
Peter?
Yes, sir.
Let's go back and talk about the location of the building. I think Paul made a very good point. We've been talking about this for years. With the code calling for us to move the buildings out closer to the road with parking in the rear, that disaster we have over on Route nine right now. That's what the code calls for, and we've constantly given waivers over the years for the location of the building. So to the point he was making before, we're confusing everybody. Which one is it going to be? Is it going to be the buildings out near the road with the parking in the back? Or, or is there another alternative? We have to come up with a, a decision.
Well, I, if I can jump in for a second, I think that the planning board has been very consistent over the last number of years that we're not in favor of the buildings out by the road. And we have had no issues with granting waivers, and we've encouraged people to push buildings back further away from the road. So I think the planning board has been very consistent with that message.
Peter?
Yes, is that Chip?
Yes. You know, maybe it's a matter of scale, because we've had smaller buildings that were closer road, and there was no, no headaches there. Nobody came up with any problems with it. But maybe because it, as you use, somebody use the word looming, maybe in this case, because of the scale of the building, it needs to be pushed back.
Okay, anybody else want to speak?
I, I, given the size of this building, it needs to be pushed back. I, I don't like the, any of these buildings too close to the road as, based on the code. And I've been a proponent for many years of, of especially massive buildings being so close to the road. So, um, so I just, well, it needs to be pushed back.
Okay, I think we need to see some alternatives. I don't think we have the support to vote on this for concept. If somebody wants to make a motion, that's fine. But I think it would serve the developer to consider all the comments and and at least present some alternatives. Does anybody disagree? Okay, so do we have a motion? Does the developer want to speak or no?
No, we're good. I'm just looking for direction, so.
Okay, we, we want to see some alternatives. You're hearing, you're, some people are saying it's, it's too big to be that close to the road. Some people are saying, we think maybe you're trying to do a little bit too much. I think that's the message that I'm hearing. And maybe we, if we could see some alternatives, you know, maybe we could get closer to where we could get, we could get support for the project. And I think it's, I think the building looks great. I think the architectural elements are fantastic. And I think what you've done behind it is, is, is fantastic as well. So.
We'll represent.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further business before this board?
Thank you, everyone. Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Video has not made me look as good as I do in person.
I agree. You're a very handsome man, and we.
You need your makeup artist.
So, so do some of us, others of us. Okay, any further business before this board? Thank you, everyone. Stay well. I, I'm happy that we, this thing is functioning reasonably well. And when the state's ready to go and the, and the town's ready to go, we'll be teed up to do it. So thank you.
Thank you. Stay well.
Stay, yep.
Yep. Stay well, everyone.
Bye-bye.